On line one fifty-three. The subject changes quickly and it doesn't really have a reference, Mary. It might, if you could, on the change above, you, under Old Business, you have a subtitle, Site Plan Application Moves Run Crossing, and then you go Old Business, but it doesn't really refer to Green Peak on that particular one. And that's what the comment was referenced to, so just to clarify, if you could reference the Green Peak project on that one. In line three oh seven, subdivision that would affix where buildings are, where the buildings are, I think the word is fix, not affix, and buildings would be plural in that case. And on line three fifty-eight, he asked Bill if that would be acceptable. Bill reiterated that Mr. Waite, what Mr. Waite said, Mr. Waite said, "Not an application, just a plat." I don't know what that means, I can't figure out what was meant by that.
What line do you want?
Three fifty-eight. Well, it starts at three fifty-eight, it runs through lines.
It's about supplying the information.
Yeah, it just doesn't...
Just reword.
Yeah, I can't, I can't understand what we're talking about at that particular point. Maybe I couldn't then either. Bill reiterated what Mr. Waite said, Mr. Waite said, "Not an application, just a plat." I think that has to do with what was, would be required as a, or what? Bill Cantlin was referring to what the, he would consider to be the final application, he was talking in terms of a final application. And I think I was stating that there's not really an application, it's just the final plat that would be submitted in the case of a phased subdivision. So if the words didn't come out that way, I think that's what the intent was.
I wasn't at the August meeting, but line three, on line three twenty-eight, at the end of the sentence, "What was approved?" is the question regarding the sign thing. Just, you know, thinking about someone reading this in the future, trying to refer back to what was really being discussed, is there a clearer way to say that? Can't not have him in here. I don't know exactly what was said, but...
I'd have to go back and listen.
Yeah. Just make it hard for people in the future, if I don't know what it means.
Issue maybe, sign issue. Need to be the word.
There's no discussion of the sign above that.
But, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I know the general context, but, but just thinking for, you know, a year or two down the road, maybe it should be a bit more complete.
Yeah.
The only thing on the plat that was actually quoted was phase one, what was approved is the question regarding the sign issue.
But to go into depth a bit more, you know, because...
Because apparently the sign is addressed above.
If there's more that was said, I can't make up words, but I'll go back and listen and see what was said.
Okay.
Well, you were talking about new development sign.
Right, that's what I assumed.
That's probably all you need to say.
Yeah, maybe in parentheses, new development sign.
On line three thirty-two, is it leaving no record of leaving what was approved? Isn't that second leaving unnecessary?
Yeah. Leaving no record of what was approved. If there are no further comments, can we get a motion to accept the August eleventh meeting minutes as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? I mean opposed? All right, the minutes are, of August eleventh, they're accepted as amended. We have no public hearing scheduled for today, we'll go right into New Business, first item, skateboard park. Issue was to address the expiration of the one-year extension. In the November two thousand fifteen meeting, it was decided that the skateboard park in the parking lot, which is designated for parking for the town square, and has been operating on a special permission, so to speak, don't really have a particular label for it, for the last ten to fifteen years. It was decided that it appears to be becoming a permanent rather than a temporary use, and that some sort of review by the planning board, some sort of a site plan review would be required. But then a temporary extension would be allowed for one more year, allowing them to prepare the application. The application was to have been submitted in the September meeting, based on vote that was passed on that, in that meeting, and there has been no application to date. It's the board's position, the chairman's position, my position, that as there's no application and as the expiration for the temporary was slated for September this year, that this is no longer a planning board issue, it becomes a code enforcement issue. Because the board has been providing temporary, or this special permission over the past several years, we probably should be notifying the selectmen and the code enforcement officer that this temporary permission is no longer there from the planning board, and that it is now a code enforcement issue. Actually, there's two things involved. One is a use that has not been approved by the planning board as far as the site plan is concerned. The second is the elimination of required parking for the town square. Their approval for that operation was based on a certain number of parking spaces, and some of those parking spaces are no longer available. So I'll leave, put it open to discussion by the board, if they, if there are any other views, if perhaps they feel another extension is called for.
Was there a reminder sent up to the mountain about this?
I don't know if we sent a reminder or anything like that, we have been sending them on a yearly basis, and I think it was pretty clear at that meeting that was, it was required.
Yeah. It just, it was, you know, a while ago.
Seems, seems the planning board has been taking the responsibility of kind of encouraging it all along, and wondering if maybe it's, I think that the discussion at the time was, it's time for them to do the right thing, I think, bringing the application.
How will they know if they don't know?
Yeah.
Well, not only that, and to complicate matters, I understand that the two individuals that were in charge of the skateboard park are no longer there, am I right on that, Mary?
Yeah, so that's...
Well, but that's not, that's not your problem.
No.
No.
That is a business problem. They have known for multiple years that this was an annual thing, they, we've had two different administrations up there that were bringing this before you. It, it's their business, and, yeah, you can be nice guys and remind them, but you're not, you don't run that business. And I don't think the board should take it on itself to remind every business when they have to do something, I just, I don't see why you have to do that.
I would agree with Mark, it's a bad precedent.
Well, we went through this last year, and the year before, and I think the year before that, you know, it's always the same, I don't know what to do about it, but every year is the same.
They come in in November instead of October because you sent them, you know, we had to call them and say, "You need to come down." I mean, you pretty much bent over backwards.
What it, what it's done is it's put the planning board in a position, the planning board's actual function would be to approve or disapprove a site plan. But the, the action, it's kind of been changed, the planning board is now acting as sort of a, in code enforcement, which really isn't, we don't have the authority, for one thing, and it isn't really in the scope of services. And the one way perhaps to get it on track would be to turn it over to code enforcement, if there's a notification made, maybe the application will come in and maybe that there won't be an annual event at that point. But there doesn't seem to be anything that triggers the, the idea of the facility that it should be getting permission to do what it's doing.
Does anybody remember why it was an annual review? Why, how did we get in this thing?
Tradition. Tradition, no. We can't remember why I would start it.
I can't remember why we decided to re, to approve this for one year, there's nothing that grants us the authority to do such a thing, right? That I can think of. But, so, you, you're not clear at all, I, neither am I, I mean, I don't think I was here the first year it was done, as to why it was for a year. I think it was...
I just, I remember that they were supposed to, you know, those are parking places, and those could be critical parking places in the winter, and they were told to make their jumps portable and to take them out in the wintertime.
And they did for a while, didn't they?
Originally, they were small, so they could move, and they could move them over to the side. And then they made them bigger and bigger, and they're not portable, they can't be moved now, so this, this has definitely have been mission creep.
It was definitely, definitely mission creep. But I think originally what happened was, they were there, the skateboard park was there, and then it was realized that it's taking up these parking spaces. But it was kind of a nice thing for the youth to have, I mean, it was a good thing for the young people to, to do, because at the time, there was concern about, I guess there used to be a dance place up at the ski area, and that was being removed and so forth, so what are the young people going to do? And so you couldn't really, because it interfered with the parking spaces of the, the town square, you couldn't really give them approval for it. So they, because it was a temporary thing, and they were going to be removing during the wintertime, it was decided to, it was a good thing, we'll give them temporary allowance to do that, that's how I remember it anyway.
But just remember, it also grew into charberry and fencing and whatever, so it got, we asked for that.
We did ask for that.
We asked for that, because, you know, so...
So it's kind of like, the removal by this little, little permanent.
The town does not own that land, correct?
No.
Bill owns that land, right?
Yeah, and there's an easement to the ski area for that parking, which the ski, I'm sorry, the town square, which the town square needs for the parking. Town square didn't have enough land for parking to do the town square. Waterville Company provided them an easement for parking on Waterville Company property, is that correct, Bill? And there were, so therefore, they were able to have the necessary parking to get the approval, that's my understanding of it. And the Waterville Company didn't have any problem with the skateboard park using that property, correct? But because of the mission creep, and because of what it's become, I think it is time to, I don't think you can just keep letting it creep, and I think it's time to kind of put a, an official approval or disapproval on it.
Well, that's what you told them last year.
That's correct.
That this was the last year.
Right, Wendy makes a good point, though, if we didn't give them a warning, and we've been giving them warnings every year, I guess that maybe it's expected, but, you know, perhaps another month extension or something like that would handle that situation, but you haven't been approached or, or anything.
There's nobody up there running it.
Yeah.
They didn't do their programs, I don't think, this summer. I don't think the camps happened because the staff isn't there.
Did you have something, Bill?
Well, I was going to say, of the two issues you mentioned, you know, is this an allowed use? That's a relatively straightforward question that we, I don't know whether it is or it isn't, but that won't hang it up. The question of elimination of parking is they've got to get, town square and everybody else is going to apply for an amended application that says, "I don't need that parking."
Or at least a waiver.
Well, you know, I don't know if they can, that becomes a court, that's the code enforcement issue. Can they waiver? Can they say, "Well, I, I, you know, I know you told me I need this many parking spaces, but I'm, I'm going to waive my right to have that many parking spaces," it's no such thing. So, so they got to come in and demonstrate that they don't need the spaces, and we would then have to vote that's, I guess on some basis, that we, on an amended parking plan, that's, that's a tunnel, you know, I don't, that could take a while, if it's doable at all. So I don't see how that's going to, I don't see how that one's going to resolve itself easily, the parking one. Maybe, maybe we're lucky and they don't care about it anymore. And, and they'll just give up, and then all we have to do is tell them, get the equipment off of there.
I think that'd be a mistake.
Really?
I think a mistake.
Is anybody using it?
Yeah.
All the time.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I saw a van come in with a whole bunch of kids in the van, just couldn't wait to get out of that van and go, they were screaming, it was great, it was good to see that being used.
One of the problems, though, is if it's not being attended to. And I was walking through the other day and just took a look at it, and it, you know, upkeep is pretty important, because it can be pretty dangerous now, granted, it's not the town's liability, but...
I see them every year repairing or rebuilding something.
Does it fall under the, the ski area ownership?
Yeah. That would be the, the operator.
Yeah. But I would comment on, on Bill's remark about the timing, I mean, they had a whole year, we told them last year to start.
Yeah.
We figured they'd get it after last year's discussion, they'd get it on their, lead time on their calendar to approach us and make sure everything was in order.
Who's, who's the actual person in charge for that, do we know?
At this point, I don't know.
Is it him, maybe, is he doing everything?
I think he, well, he'd be the guy to start it, yeah.
So who would be the, who'd be the person to approach him to start that way? Anybody, or?
Well, I suppose the board could write in a letter saying that, you know... They didn't do that last year.
Point of clarification is, didn't we, didn't we extend it to the end of October, but wanted them to come in in September, so don't they have approval through October?
Mr. Larson also made a recommendation that September two thousand six, they come in with a modified plan. Mr. Larson made the motion for them to come in no later than September two thousand sixteen, to come in for a formal site plan review for the skateboard park, all in favor in agreement. It was, was voted to be all in favor of that.
Now, had we only had our tickler files back then, what would have gone?
Can I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
I'm Stephen Whitley, I'm the town's attorney, and I've been listening to this conversation.
Welcome.
Just, just want to, it's hard to sit here and not... My suggestion is that you turn this over to code enforcement, and let them write the letter, and say, you know, "You don't have a site plan on appro, approval on file, you've been, you've been notified that you need one, we're going to give you X number of days to submit an application, and if you don't do that, we're going to find you in violation." Because that, the correspondence that you're talking about really needs to come from the code enforcement office, I think, as opposed to the planning board. Because as been mentioned here, I mean, your jurisdiction is really, you know, when you get an application or a plat before you for approval for a site plan or subdivision, or maybe if you need, you know, a conditional use approval, or special use permit, or something like that. But it doesn't sound like any of those really applies here, because you don't have any sort of application or request for approval before you. So I think that this is really something that should be handled by the code enforcement position, as opposed to the planning board.
Thank you. And that brings us, well, continue this discussion, but I, that sounds correct to me, and...
And do you have any, any suggestions to the code enforcement officer in as to what you think would be appropriate? I mean, do you want us to, to, you know, we're going to, the selectmen are going to direct the code enforcement officer what to say. And I would be open to any suggestions you might have as to what you think we ought to say.
I think...
Not that we would agree to them, but, you know, it's a starting point.
It would be my suggestion that a summary of the events as to how it developed, as to where it is right now, and the planning board's role in, in providing them yearly special permission, although we don't exactly know what to call it. But, and that, at this particular point in time, due to various situations such as mission creep or scope creep, that we feel it's time that, you know, the permanent status, the apparent permanent status of the facility and the, the growth in it, has gotten to the point where we feel that some sort of site approval would be required.
Right, but, but assuming they, again, there has to be a remedy to the extent that they decide not to do it. Oh, maybe they should change.
Are we talking about the skate park?
We certainly are.
I just saw it on the agenda, I apologize, I just noticed it, so I ran right down.
And you have an application?
An application? I do not have an application, no, I apologize.
Well, we, I think we understand, it's been kind of discussion, apparently, there's been a change in the personnel that have been keeping up.
So Luke Matheson, who used to always come with application, he's no longer working for us. So I handled it two years ago, I might unhandle it again, but if you recall, last year about this time, we started talking about the horses, and we were talking about doing a formal site plan review.
Right.
At this time, I don't feel that's, that's a good idea to go down that road, I feel that a one-year extension would be good for, for us as an organization, so we can figure out if we're going forward with the skate park. The skate park, skate camp registration was at an all-time low this year, and so we're, we're still in flux of exactly where the skate park lies. No concern of maintenance, the main, maintenance has been taken care of, we have a young man who works for us that contains the, maintains the park, we've been sweeping it, we've been keeping up on it. But I do feel that I'd rather go for a one-year extension rather than a formal site plan review, now that I know more about site plans and the permanency of those site plans.
With the idea that this would be the final year for that extension?
Correct, either I'll go for a site plan, or I'll, or we'll be moving the park.
I think we have no choice, but why say no to that?
What's it an extension of?
An extension of the temporary status, right?
Correct.
Correct.
So what is the temporary status approval based upon?
That's the problem.
The same thing that what the issue is was based on.
That's the heart of the matter.
So let me, let me suggest something, and you can fill something out. If you gave it to code enforcement, and code enforcement gave the notice, could code enforcement provide a time period for which, over which to comply?
Are you directing that?
Well, I'm looking at you because you're the lawyer.
Yes?
So the, the code enforcement could say, "We find the use not in compliance, you have until September of two thousand seventeen to come up with a approved, approved by the planning board."
I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable with allowing it to operate in the absence of site plan approval. So I, I, I think my suggestion remains the same, that you send a notice and say, "You don't have site plan approval, you know, in order to operate, you need site plan approval." So you need to make the business decision about whether you're going to go forward at this location or someplace else, and go through the proper approval. and go through the proper approval, approvals that are required for any business in town in order to operate. Because otherwise, you find yourself kind of on a slippery slope, in that you're allowing someone to operate without site plan approval. So what do you do when there's someone else that comes in and says, "You let the skate park do this, you know, for a year before they had to submit any sort of a site plan approval, so I want, I want the same thing." And I don't, I don't necessarily think you wanna put yourselves in the position of having to pick and choose whether that sort of a, a treatment is appropriate, and, and, you know, in that circumstance. Because it's hard to, it's hard to, to draw lines when you start doing that. And when you do start having to draw lines like that, you open yourselves up to claims of favoritism, or unequal treatment, or, you know, even, even some sort of discrimination.
Even though we have the precedent set that we've had this temporary permit?
And I don't, I'm not gonna pretend to know the background about how that came about, so, I don't know. That could, that could change my opinion, but it doesn't sound like anyone here knows what that was based on. So, and I don't, I don't hear anyone saying they've got an approval someplace in the file someplace. So, there is no approval. So we, you've recognized that there's no formal approval, and it's time to correct that. And it sounds like what was, what was approved previously was rather confined, and that what's there presently is beyond the scope of whatever was approved previously. So, I think that even if there was some sort of a concrete approval previously, they've gone beyond that, and, and as you know, one of the, one of the triggers for site plan review is an expansion. And that sure sounds like an expansion to me.
Steve?
Correct.
Yes, Tim Smith, I don't believe we've met. So, in my preparation for the horse stables that we've been discussing quite a bit here at the planning meetings, I've been doing a lot of work with town's site plan. And the way the site plan's really designed is for development of, of residential areas and, and buildings and so forth. And it becomes very challenging for someone to do a site plan for something that is an activity of small use that doesn't have permanency to it, like a temporary horse barn, or, or skate ramps that can be literally picked up and moved anywhere that they, they want to go. So if we do go down that road of site plan, I encourage the board to really take a look at what we're actually asking of myself or any other business person in a full site plan review. You're talking engineering proposals, you're talking all of these, these high things, which we've talked about in previous meetings. It's very challenging and cost, costly to go through these site plans for, for these activities. I ask, does, do we have site plans for, for the, the driving range? Do we have a site plan on that?
It's been told if he opens up a driving range business, that he will have to have a site plan in there.
Can I just, is there a way that, that we can make a site plan review that's, that's less cumbersome for, for operations of this type? That's my question.
As you did with the horse stable.
Correct.
You came in for a conceptual review, and I think we discussed exactly that. That perhaps, you know, there would be a lot of the formal requirements that wouldn't be necessary. And it's possible that with this skating, skateboard park, that same might be true, but I wouldn't really know unless we went through some sort of conceptual design review, or conceptual review. So I, I, I don't know what to tell you on that, Tim, but I, I, I think without knowing, you know, without you coming in and saying, "This is what we'd like to do," would it be, would it be necessary for us to have the contours? Would it be necessary for us to have the bounty survey? Would it be necessary for us to have all those things that are required in a typical site review? It may not be required, and I think we do have the right to waive some of the requirements.
And that was gonna be my response, is, is that if you feel like, and I'm not trying to give you legal advice, I'm just, there is a mechanism available to you to relieve yourself of some of those technical burdens.
Correct.
Whether it's appropriate for the board to grant those waivers, I don't know, but that is a possibility.
Correct, and we've discussed this, and we've come to that conclusion. I, I would just lean on the board to say that if there's anything we can do to make that easier, to make it so I don't have to come here week after week, or month after month, and trial this out for a long period, period of duration. If we could in any way make that easier on a simpler form that states, "This is exactly what we're looking for, for, you know, issues of non-permanence." Some sort of a site plan review for something that is removable, like the horse barns and the, the, the driving range and the, the skate park, would make it much easier on us, and make this process simpler.
Terry, could you, I'm sorry, could you read the language from, from the meeting as to what was, what was decided last August? The two sentences I think you just read a few minutes ago.
Okay, I'll read the last part of it. Mark said Bill Cantlin's talking, uh, let me make it some, okay, sorry.
This is from the November last...
This is from the November meeting last year. Mr. Larson made a motion to approve a temporary one-year extension on the state, on the skate park. It was seconded and all voted in favor. Mr. Larson also made a recommendation that September 2016, they come in with a modified plan for the state, for the skate park, and go through the process. Or they could come in at any meeting, just no later than September sixteen, uh, nine, uh, 2016. Mr. Larson then made a motion for the, I, for them to come in no later than September 2016, to come in with a more formal site plan review for the skateboard park.
Is that key to the, an actual September meeting of the board, or to 30 September, 2016?
We assume it was timed to the meeting of the board, right?
Right, yes, yeah.
I'm just looking for some...
Yeah, well...
Timing issue here.
The parking problem also came up.
Just let me add my two cents, I, I would think, Tim, if, if, if you went through a conceptual review, you would find that most of the requirements that are called for here are gonna get waived. You know, so, you know, I wouldn't get hung up on that. I, I think there are two, two, one is to read the zoning and become convinced that it's an allowed use on, that's Village Commercial, right?
C1.
C1?
Yeah.
That it's allowed use on C1 land. Because that'll, you know, and I, I, off the top of my head, don't know. I know it's allowed on Village Commercial, whether it's allowed on C1, I don't know.
Well, skateboard park is not, but recreation, I mean, it's a little murky.
Yeah, well, but if it's, if you think there's some logic of what it is, fine, you know? The, the other issue is the fact that it's, if it was on vacant land, it's one thing. But it's not, it's an area that was designated for parking, and I don't know what to do with that. You, you know, I mean, do we, you know, we really have to deal with somehow in this, the issue, is that parking really needed for parking?
The other part of this...
I mean, I, I realize that that's a messy issue, and I'm guessing that's exactly why it was made temporary to begin with, because nobody knew how to deal with that issue.
But we have been allowing it for a number of years.
Well, I think we would all around this table agree that there is very little likelihood that, that there would be so much parking down there that these spaces would ever be needed for parking again. But I could, you know, I mean, I would, I'd love to see the day where that happens, but it's not likely. I mean, we haven't come close.
The big argument is that people will park on the stairways, they'll park on top of each other, before they'll park that far away from Town Square.
Right, well, they can park, and, 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 you know, so the other open parking space over in the Black Bear, forget about it, I mean, we can designate it as parking space, but no one uses it for that purpose.
I think that's, was pretty much recognized when this was discussed.
But somehow, I, I don't know who, in the, you know, we've got an approved thing that says, okay, this has gotta be used for parking. Someone's gotta go, I'm guessing the route is, and amend an application and say, "I don't need this for parking."
Well, it could be...
And I don't know, I don't think that's the mountain who can do that.
There's two types of easements for parking, right? And I, and I really can't remember which, what the two are. One is for the town, I don't know, maybe you can help me?
No, the two types that you've always discussed have been designated parking specifically for a use and the shared parking. And most of the parking lots there are shared between...
The Town Square parking is exclusive.
To them, to Town Square.
But the, the board has the right to waive particular requirements. So if, if the application came in, and it somehow coordinated the town, the, the Town Square and the skate park, all by the same people, it's the same organization, it's a ski area, is that correct?
Correct.
So that one application could come in from one owner and deal with both situations, I would think.
Does, does the mountain own that land?
No.
No, no, right.
Well, alone a facility, okay.
Right.
But they, they, they own the easement for the parking, and they own the skate park. So they could come in requesting...
You mean they own the easement for the parking, I'm gonna be careful.
Well, okay, there, there is an easement for the parking.
There is an easement for the Town Square that, that's designated, that is parking space from the Waterville Company.
Okay, but my point is that the request, the, the application could go along with a request for a waiver on the, on the parking requirement.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Cantlin has something.
I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
To further complicate the issue, you know, we've been talking for some time about finding ways to increase density in the C1 zone, and I question whether you wanna grant permanent approval for a skateboard park in the C1 zone under any conditions. Because it's kind of counter to the things that you've been talking about, we've been collectively working on. You know, the flip side is, it's been there for a long time. The mountains always responded to requests for landscaping, or trash pickup, or anything else you want. And, you know, we're a small town, and it's not a big problem, and I question whether maybe you say, hey, you know, let's let this slide for another year, because there really isn't a lot of bite back, I don't think. I mean, that's your business, but, you know, it's kind of counter to the direction you wanna go in relative to density in C1 zone.
Very valid. Very valid.
So the question really boils down to is, because we just made a decision last November, we can change our mind and say, "Well, even though we thought this was a good idea then, given these circumstances, should we continue as we have for one more year? Or should we require, you know, forms A, B, and C to be in, so we know what to expect for the next year?" You know, we can, right?
And I think that conversation is for the board of selectmen.
Okay.
And not for, not for you. Because it's a question of whether you enforce or not, and, and what are they potentially in violation of? Those are questions for the board of selectmen and code enforcement.
So you think the best path for the planning board is to say, "It's really beyond our purview right now, hand it over to code enforcement, and let..." Okay.
Yeah, I would say without any kind of an application at all, there really isn't anything that we can do. The question is, is it worth your while to come in for a conceptual review, go through an application process which may be a lot less than what you think, and which could deal with the parking and the skateboard park at the same time? Even though, Bill, I understand what you're saying, is, you know, is it, is it a good idea to have a permanent approval like that in the C1, but...
But permanent...
It's a, it's a, it's a good, it's a good use, I think, at this particular point. I mean, I think everybody agrees that it's, it's not a detriment, it's kind of an asset, so...
But, but it's your land, Bill.
Right.
Right, it's not, it's not, so our approval just means it's an allowed use in that zone. Doesn't mean you have to allow them to use it for that purpose.
It sounded like...
Right, at all.
It sounded like from Tim's original comments about the the usage dropping down this year, that the mountain may be evaluating to see whether it's going to exist in the future or not. So, prior to doing something on a more permanent basis, maybe they need to have some time, whether it's another year or whatever, and enforcement can deal with that however they want. But, I mean, if, if we do all of this, and they come back next year and say they're canning it, they don't want it, or they're moving it to the mountain, or whatever.
Yep, but your approval doesn't affect the permanency of any of the structures or anything else. It's just, like Bill said, recognizing that it's an allowed use, and it can happen there. That's all you're saying.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
Nothing is changing, you're not pouring concrete and, and making these structures any different than they are today, it's just the paperwork of approval.
I mean, it's, it's similar in many respects to the horse barn issue, it, it, you know, or the hor, the horse storage issue. I mean, what we're saying is you can store horses there. You, you know, you don't have to store horses there, and you can, you can use the land for other purposes, if that's your intention, you know? I mean, it's just, that's one of the things you could use it for.
Well, I would suggest that it...
All right, well, selectmen will take it up?
I, I suggest we turn it over to code enforcement.
Sure.
And that the code enforcement consider that the use might be continued as long as there's an application in the process to the planning board. And that might prevent the situation where next September, an hour into the meeting, I see Tim walking down the road, "Stay outside while you're coming and sitting down." I just read that. Because it's happened several times, that it just isn't, you know, it's not one of the things that the ski area has on the top of their list, and so it does get forgotten.
Yeah, the only, it's, the only thing that changes is the body walking in.
Yeah.
It started with Tommy Day walking in.
Is there any disagreement with that? Is that seem reasonable to you, Tim?
Sure.
And do you see anything that we, is problematic with that, Steve?
No, I, I think that's a, in, in principle, a, a good way to address it. And I guess, I guess the caveat would be, they can't expand the use beyond what they've previously done until they come before this board and get a site plan approval.
So I will move that the skateboard park issue be turned over to code enforcement with an explanation of the history, and a comment that it would not be against the planning board's thinking that it'd be allowed to continue during a site plan application process. I didn't, and that's, that's not real clear, I need, I need some other words in there. Did you write that down, Mary, because I didn't?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
And I'm gonna suggest a little amendment, rather than saying to the code enforcement officer, could we say to the board of selectmen acting as the code enforcement officer? Because we really don't have such a thing yet.
All right, so the, the motion is that the skateboard park, is it skateboard park or skate park?
Skate park.
Skate park issue be handed over to...
The board of selectmen acting as code enforcement officer.
Stating that it is currently or it, it currently has no approval. Or it has no planning board approval. I think as far as the motion is concerned, that would be enough. I think as far as what we can comment on and all that, it's just as, that would allow a letter to be written to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, it does, it leaves it up to the board of selectmen then to decide what the appropriate next step is.
Correct. All right, so the motion is skateboard park issue be handed over to board of selectmen acting as code enforcement officer stating that it currently has no planning board approval.
That the park has no, not the board of selectmen has approval.
Park, okay. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, all in, any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, Janice. All right, Tim, you understand what that situation is then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I'll be here in one second.
Okay, the next issue on the agenda is the resilient economies pilot program with North Country Council.
Yeah, Kayla, Kayla put it off because of the changes to the zone ordinance that we wanted to discuss with Stephen. She'll be here in October.
Tabled, can you move that to the agenda for October, Mary, please? The assigning of a CIP subcommittee, I think I'll, I'll put that off until later, we've got some people here who want to deal with some. Update on sign ordinance review, Bill?
Sure, at the last meeting, Kayla dropped a little comment, which some of I picked up on that, gee, have you reviewed your sign ordinance to ensure that it's in compliance with some case that went before the Supreme Court last year? And I dug it up and looked at it and then passed it on to Mark, who passed it on to the town attorney. And the feedback coming back was you got, you got some problems with your sign ordinance, all right? And let me see if I can clarify at least my understanding as a layman here, what the issue is. The issue is we have a right to regulate signs, that's not the question. The question is can you regulate the content on the sign? And the Supreme Court, as I understand it, says you can't. You, you can't tell somebody what, what they are. So kind of the rule of thumb that I've heard interpreted, and I'd like to hear otherwise if we haven't got this, is you can probably write whatever kind of rules you want as long as they don't involve having to look at what's written on the sign. So such things as rules regarding real estate signs, and the only way you could do that is to physically look at the sign. So they're kind of, you can't write rules like that, that says you can't have a real estate sign, you know? You gotta treat everybody the same, in other words, that whatever the rules are now. That was kind of the ruling. Now, the situation we're in, I'm assuming every town in the state of New Hampshire is in, that, that many of their regulations probably are in violation of that principle. True, but, you know, I, but they're still, you know, from my perspective, still, even though they may not be right according to the Supreme Court, they are what we approved until we changed them. So I think we ought to take a look at our regulations and see how we could begin to move them. But I'm not suggesting this has to, that this is a crisis or is any sense of an emergency. But I'd like to pause there and get the attorney's comments as to whether, yeah, I think we should try to get them in compliance, but I don't think we have a crisis on our hands.
Well, your description of the case was pretty spot on.
Okay.
That is what I think the, the best way to describe it is. Anytime you carve out categories for different types of signs and regulate that type of sign differently than other categories, you're, you're probably looking at what the sign says to put, put the sign in whatever category you've, you've created. Real estate is a perfect example of that. And the Supreme Court said, you know, if you're gonna do that, that's a content-based restriction on speech. And because it's content-based, you've got to survive the most difficult sort of court review for those ordinances to be upheld. Which frankly, no, no sign ordinance is probably going to survive. So the, the kind of fallout from that case is municipalities all over the country, and certainly there are tons in New Hampshire, all have signed ordinances that are now probably invalid. And so, yeah, I mean, I think if you're going through the practice of looking at zoning ordinance changes for the upcoming town meeting, I absolutely recommend that you, you add this to the list and do it now. Because if you don't, I guess to the question about is there, you know, some urgent pressing deadline? Not really, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that, you know, if you don't have it done by a certain date that the sky's gonna fall or anything like that. But you do have a zoning ordinance out there that we know is probably invalid. And I, I, I would recommend that you take steps to fix that so the town doesn't have to defend itself in court from someone filing a lawsuit. Because I don't know when that lawsuit would get filed, you don't know when that lawsuit would be filed. Could be filed tomorrow, could be filed already and we don't know about it, it could never be filed. But the point is you, you want to address this sort of stuff proactively as opposed to reactively. And so I think the time to do it would be, would be now.
Can I ask you?
Um, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask a question, so in reading the information that's been going through, it sounds like the sign ordinance, it's, it's handled as a zoning ordinance and it's listed here by Tara, so that would normally be handled as a private covenant. What's a private covenant?
A, a private covenant is just, you know, if you, it's, it's a promise between two landowners that's usually in a deed that says, you know, if you're gonna have a sign, you, you, I guess the best example to use from what Tara was saying, if you have a homeowners association, which I understand they're pretty prevalent here, they probably have covenants so that the individual owners can't put whatever signs they want outside their condo units. And that sort of thing is fine, because that's not, that's not the government enforcing those restrictions. That's a, a private interaction between the condo owner and the homeowners association.
So when she says something that's, that's handled now as a zoning ordinance provision, it's typically handled by private covenant, she's saying get it out of the ordinance, right?
Uh, yeah, she was questioning whether it should even be in the ordinance in the first place. And I don't know which, which one you're referring to, because I think she said that in.
There are several of them, yeah.
Yeah, so some of them I, I'm okay with. Why don't you back up and say, I haven't had a chance to speak with Tara about these yet. So it's possible that after I have a chance to learn a little more from her, that, that might change my opinion. But I've, she, she shot me an email and described some of the things that I think that, you know, you're really referring to. And some of them I think they're okay, but others I would agree with her, they probably need to be taken out.
All right, now, towards that end, I started to put together, so even called this a straw man, it's great. This is a concept of some changes we might consider making that I'm hoping would get our, our regulation to be closer into compliance with the law. And I'll hand this out and we'll kind of go through them. Some of these are fairly straightforward. Do we hand that out? So these are just some rules of thumbs and things we might consider in, in actually trying to redraw the ordinance, all right? I don't know, are there any more over there?
There's a term here.
Right. So this is not an official document by, all this is just thinking out loud, so I, you know, be very careful here. And, and much of this is not at all what we would finally come up with, all right? So the first thing is generally some statement along the line that says, look, if you can't read it from a town road or a journey property, why are we regulating it? Get it off the regulation books. I mean, if it's not visible, then leave it alone, they can do anything they want. You know, you could put up the most outrageous sign if the only people reading it is yourselves, all right? So the, the key to me would be, you know, principally, if you can't see it from a town road or you can't see it from a journey property, why bother to regulate it?
See the sign or read it?
Well, I, I would use the definition readable. Because you get into such silly things as the little golf course tee signs. I mean, they're signs, but they're really not visible, you know, not readable from outside the property. So from my perspective, those aren't something we're trying to regulate. Similarly, anything on the Forest Service property is beyond, you know, we just don't want to deal with it, it's their problem, all right? That all of our existing rules we have that deal with size, type of construction, light, sound, you know, no gooseneck lamps, all this silly stuff, they basically stay the same, from what I can see, they don't really affect content. We're just talking about character of the, you know, that it's got to be a certain size and, you know, it can't be cheap. And here's the tough one, I don't know what the hell to do with directional signs. We currently have this section that says, look, and it reads that on arterial intersections, businesses are allowed in common to erect directional signs on public property. Now, I, we gotta find some clever way to word that so that we don't have anybody believing they have a right to go stick a sign up on public property. But certainly we would want to be able to continue to have directional signs on public property. So I'm, I, I, I don't, I don't have a good way to do that, but I think we would all kind of agree that that's worthwhile doing.
If the town owns the land and the individual wants to put a sign up on the town's land, do we have control over the wording in that particular case?
If it's your, if it's town property, then yeah, I mean, because you.
Oh, okay.
If you're putting up, if you're putting a sign up on town property, that's the town communicating. And the town can communicate just like anybody else can.
Even if it's somebody else, an, an individual that has requested to use the land for their own purpose, okay?
Yep, by, by agreeing to let them use town property to put up that sign, you're, you're adopting that message is kind of the, the line of thought. So you're, it's still your communication, because you have control over who gets to put the stuff there and who doesn't.
So with a, just a few exceptions, I'm not sure, for instance, who owns the big town square sign? That little triangle of land that sits, I'm assuming that it's in fact town property.
It is.
Right, so that we have a right to reasonably regulate that sign, which would be very helpful, all right? Now, what do we do with about everything else on private property? My concept would be that we don't limit content, that we focus on numbers that you're allowed by type of property. So for single family, two family home sites, you can't have any signs, period, no signs. If you have a completed condominium and home association, maybe you get one sign per road access, something like that, you're allowed to have one. Now, remember, anything within the condo that's not readable outside the boundaries, then do whatever you want. Right, but, but maybe you get one sign per road access, something like that. On a commercial property, commercial properties can have one sign per road access, two signs per business.
What's a sign hanging on a post that says Larson Residence? Is that a sign?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I, I agree with, this is the problem we're gonna run into, you know, if I got, if I got a little welcome sign out there or something, is, yeah, it's a sign. So maybe we allow, maybe we do allow one sign per single family, you know? But then that gets into the problem, that could be a real estate sign.
Well, I think, I think you, you, one way to address that is you say you can have a sign if you're a single family or.
Right.
Or family home site, and then that's it. And then if they want to have a sign that says Larson, they're permitted to do that.
Right.
And then if the guy or, or girl next door wants to sell their home, they're allowed to put up a for sale sign.
Right, well, I think we could also hand it by temporary. We could probably write regulations that says you can have a permanent sign, but temporary signs are not allowed on, on, on single family home sites. And, and you could, most real estate signs, people don't want to go to the cost of making them permanent.
Oh, no, no, the, the whole temporary-permanent question is a murky one, though.
Oh, all right.
You know, it's temporary without reading the content of the sign.
Yeah.
You know, and, and in some cases that may be easy, in other cases it's a little difficult to.
Right.
Make that argument.
Just a point of, just a question, can you regulate, well, you're talking about the physical factors. Can you regulate the size of the letters? I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
If you regulate the size of the letters in some sense, then you're regulating how much, how much somebody could say on a given sign.
We already do that, we already specify dimensions, we specify type of material, wind load it's supposed to withstand, all of that.
So that, that's acceptable to continue?
Yeah, that's no problem, apparent, right?
Yeah, no, I think that's correct.
Yeah. So then going on, we got, you know, and these are just, you can read them, I, you know, because these are gonna change, you know? Vacant land, nothing, you, you can't have a sign on vacant land. Vacant properties that have got an approved site plan for either residential or commercial construction, we could allow some signs on those. Recreational property, you can get one sign per road access, maybe two signs per business if, you know, so that they can get the name of the golf course or something up there. And civic, I don't, I guess we don't even have to, do we have to address civic? No.
I wouldn't.
All right, so we just forget about civic. So it would be writing a set of regulations that more limited numbers by type of property rather than, so that was my thought as to how we might change this to, to still prevent sign proliferation all over the place, but yet not have to deal with what is the message.
So in condos now, you can't prevent a for sale sign on a specific unit?
Yeah, you can't, we can't, we, we also are gonna have to go to every association and say, you know, you ought to write your own bylaws, we would encourage you in your bylaws to prohibit them. But the, the ruling principle would be if it ain't visible from the road, yeah, you could stick a for sale sign up.
But the condo association can enforce that.
The condo association can prevent it. And we could, we could encourage them, but we can't make it mandatory.
Which they probably don't, because the town used to do that.
They probably don't, so they'd have to amend their rules?
I think yes.
Signage?
I think a lot do.
Yeah, Rich, I'm pretty sure.
It's not enforced, because normal doesn't permit signs.
Does not permit signs.
Not permitted.
So all this is, is some thoughts. If directionally this seems to be the way to go, then, you know, we can try to get this organized a little bit.
Is this from, is this from the zoning?
It's in the zoning.
It's not the regulations, is it?
No, this is in the zoning.
In the zoning, yeah, we just changed it a couple years, right?
We did, to deal with the, the, the whole thing around intersection signs.
There were a big, big change.
And for long as we don't have to touch those. But, but what, what this, you know, is trying to do is prevent, you know, sign glut, but.
Bill, I think there's one other, one other areas, political signs.
Well, I ain't saying anything about political signs.
Well, we have a good section in the zoning ordinance right now that addresses political signs.
Right.
I think we should leave it.
Yeah, we would, I, it basically says you can't put, you can't put it up on public property.
Right, that's.
I would even, I would even suggest taking that out. Because what, what'll happen is someone will, will make an argument that the entire sign ordinance should be stricken because of that one. Yes, yes.
I, I think we made the statement and I would, I think is the best is, is that regarding political signs, they conform to whatever the state requirements and regulations are.
Uh, yeah, I even think you don't even say anything about it.
Yeah, no, I mean.
They're assigned.
Do you have to say that? Right.
They're assigned just like anything else, so they've got to conform to all the physical characteristics or limitations that you have in place.
Oh, you can.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they're, they can be regulated just like a first, and they, they can be regu, their physical characteristics can be regulated just like any other sign. But when you start giving them special treatment by having a subcategory for them, is where you raise the red flag and, and potentially invite a legal challenge. So you just include them, you just don't mention them. You don't carve out a separate category for them, and then they're, they fall under the regulations, whatever regulations that you end up adopting.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
So if directionally this makes sense, is obviously a lot more work to do. We have a lot more debates as to what is the appropriate number. I mean, I'm not suggesting these are in any way the right answer, you know? And it, but, but we should probably start to go to work on them. I for one would like to keep in our, the problem is, is we do have a need for temporary signs, the nature of the resort. I mean, if somebody wants to have a tent sale, I mean, you know. Uh, I, 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 you know, are we gonna make them have a permanent sign to do that?
Or any, any advanced banners and all that.
Yeah, advanced banners, so I, I'd like to keep it in, just specify there can't be any more than X and, and create some rules around what's a, what does a good temporary sign look like, you know?
I think, you know, we could get some input from Tara.
Yeah.
If that's part of the zoning that they're looking at with regard to review. So I, we think if there's gonna be some expense made to, to do that, 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 I think we should get some input. Bill. I'm sorry, Bill.
No problem. The planning board ought to decide what kind of, uh, sign they'd like to see or they thinks is appropriate to support future development. And I think future development, uh, could be considered for vacant land or, or for land that doesn't have site plan approval. But I think you need to think about, you know, what kind of support you wanna offer for future developers.
Well, um, what's the next step on this then?
Well, the next step is to do more work, is to try to get this into a form that we can begin to at least debate. Then we'd have to get public hearings, and we, right, have to get public input, and eventually we'd have to adopt a revised ordinance, and, and we'd have to get legal counsel to at least review it and say, yeah, it's okay. They're never gonna say it's good, but.
We might.
They might, right, but it's okay. We can live with that.
Sell yourself short, we might.
Well, perhaps we should set up a committee to, uh, to come up with something that can be reviewed and.
It's fine with me.
Put by counsel and Tara and see for suggestions and then, uh. Would you be willing to lead a committee?
Sure. Would anybody else wanna beef on the committee?
Would anybody else wanna be on a committee that Bill is leading? Do you have any interest?
I won't be here, so.
You won't be here, no.
That's not an excuse.
I'm short on time, but if you want to shoot anything by email.
Yeah, sure. We can do a lot of this work by email, I think.
Thank you, Wendy. Do we need three for a committee?
Uh, I don't think so. I, we, it's what it is, right?
Well, if anybody else has any interest in joining the committee, you can, uh, contact Bill. And, uh, Bill, you wanna, you wanna carry that?
We'll try to have a, uh, if we're gonna try to get this for the next town meeting, then we'll try to have an update by the next meeting.
Okay, uh, Mary, on the committee report.
Something gets closer.
Sign committee? Okay, thank you, Bill. Now we'll move into, uh, old business, and Tara's not here, but Steve, is it Whitley?
Yes.
Okay, Steve Whitley is, uh, land use attorney. Am I correct?
Uh, municipal, but that's.
Municipal, okay.
Includes land use, so sure.
And you have reviewed, some review questions that Tara has come up with.
Correct.
And you, you have developed some sort of solutions or?
Um, I, I, I don't know if I can call them solutions quite yet. Tara emailed me some things she identified in her review of the zoning ordinance.
I get a call.
And the.
Does this thing have?
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so, um, I've had a crazy recent work schedule, so I, and she and I have yet to connect to discuss these items. But I did, uh, take a look at your zoning ordinance and based on her comments, um, have some suggestions. So I, I don't know if you wanna just go through the list of things that she identified or?
Yeah, we'll go right down through it.
Okay. So the, the first one is in Article Four. She raises an issue about, um, there's language in there about a five foot setback from land belonging to the, the US government. And I think that's probably okay. She, she questioned whether you could have a setback, uh, according to the owner. But I think here, as I understand it, the, the US government in question, it's, it's the national forest. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the US government, I mean, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm speculating a little bit, but they're probably gonna continue to be the owner of the Forest Service, designated Forest Service land for quite some time. So one, one thought is to change the language to, instead of land belonging to the United States government, land designated as national forest. And that way, it's not, it's not a classification or a setback based on the owner of the property, but, but more akin to what she suggested, a use oriented, um, qualification.
You get the wrong handle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, Mark's.
Oh, sorry.
I'm wondering.
That's why everybody's playing.
I will, I will wait to go on then.
Yeah, cause I saw the item.
Well, it didn't make sense.
And nobody said a thing. Isn't that something, eh?
Oh, everyone agrees, this is great.
I thought you could link something to something here, you know?
Yeah, for truly does that.
I even thought I saw some.
How long have you guys all lived in here in town?
It varies, but I'd say, I've been here about fifteen or sixteen years, I guess, yeah.
Maybe a.
Twelve?
Full time, eighteen.
Eighteen.
But I owned since eighty-five, so.
Yeah, yeah, twelve. Yeah, full, uh, full time for probably about twelve, but had property here for thirty-five years.
Yeah.
So what is this that we got?
Yeah.
That's the initial, uh. I think this was a quote by Tara for services.
Well, I gathered that, I was just wondering what services were.
Uh, to, to assist, I think, in going through the, perhaps the regulations in the zoning.
We discussed it the last minute.
Yeah.
She could help us.
Okay.
After having told us that she read through it and was appalled by the condition it was in.
She then offered her service.
How convenient.
Still on track with Croatia?
Still on track, yep.
You going there?
Yeah. Three weeks, something like that.
Just Croatia or?
Yeah, just Croatia. It raises a question whether I'll be up to the next planning board meeting.
Yeah. I guess it depends on terrorist activity.
Yeah. There's none in Croatia.
No?
No.
I'll have you have to get there. Don't need to worry them.
Oh, it doesn't, that doesn't bother me at all.
Some little lady tried to like, well, you know.
Taking you going out.
Coast history and.
They allow one lighter?
Pretty much the coast, yeah.
You can't have two lights, you can have one lighter.
Yeah, I will.
She's gonna like one thing at a time.
Yeah, why do you have a lighter?
No, I'm not here.
Yeah.
She had a lighter on the plane, she started him on fire.
Two or three places. Like they let her on the plane? Yeah, they allow one lighter.
Fifteen emails between Tara and Stephen and I ran off.
Oh, yeah. I think, yeah, I liked.
They grow up really nice.
They, they made you dump it in the thing?
Yeah, yeah, I said. Each guy's just one hundred dollars. Oh, no, we destroyed after, I said that.
Ah, now it all makes sense. Well, now I can read it, whether it makes sense. At least to me.
You guys take a second and read Tara's comment, Article Four, and then I'll, I'll repeat what I said earlier. So my, my thought on this first one was that the language could be changed to, uh, land designated as national forest as opposed to belonging to the United States government. And I think that would be consistent with Tara's comment about having the wording be use oriented, as opposed to, um, focusing on the ownership of a parcel. I don't know if that will satisfy her concern, cause as I said, I haven't had a chance to chat with her about these, but I will do that. So that's the first one. So I, I guess if anyone has any questions or comments on that, um, okay, I'll go to them.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Would you specify White Mountain National Forest then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, my language, that's just rough language, so, you know, we can tweak it as needed. Um, okay, so Section Five B four. Okay, that, that section deals with, um, off-street parking and loading requirements, um, when the requirements are not specified. So you guys in your zoning ordinance have parking and loading requirements, um, for enumerated uses in a, in a schedule, but it looks like every now and then you get something that doesn't fall within, um, one of those, one of those scheduled categories. Uh, and in those cases, the board of selectmen decides. And I think that's fine. Uh, I don't have a, a concern with that. Tara had asked about whether it could be delegated to the select board, uh, as it's not an innovative land use control. But I don't think that's, I don't think that's the only way to delegate decisions like this to the, to the select board. I don't think you have to do that under a designated land use control. Innovative, excuse me, innovative land use control, that's just one way to do it. So, uh, just to say it one more time, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, Section Five B four.
The way it is?
Yeah, yeah. I think if we're, if we're gonna be making changes, it might be helpful to add a little more detail to what the planning board considers and, and when it makes this decision. Because, you know, anytime you don't have a whole lot of guidance in the ordinance, it's possible that someone could claim that, uh, the ordinance is too vague. And so whatever decision was reached was arbitrary or unreasonable, cause there were no kind of guiding principles for the board of selectmen to, to, to go by. Okay, so any, any comment or conversation on, on that? The next one is Section Five B two. And this relates to junkyards. And Tara, uh, this is really the second paragraph there, um, which says, let's see. That second paragraph says, no inoperative or unregistered vehicles or parts can be kept on any property within sighted residence for more than seven consecutive days, or more than thirty days within any three sixty-five period. Uh, and I think that's fine. I think that's a permissible thing to have in your zoning ordinance. You can zone for aesthetics, and, and that's, that's what this is. So I think that's okay. Any questions or comments on that one? Okay. Uh, moving to the next one, this is, oh, this is the sign ordinance, actually. And I, she didn't specify the paragraph, but I think she's talking about the permits under the, yeah. It's, it's paragraph, sub-paragraph three, that sign ordinance permits are issued by the, the board of selectmen. And I think that's fine. I think that's a permissible thing to, to delegate that to the selectmen. Um, and the next one, she talks about, we've really already gone over.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah, sure.
It, it, by your comment, does that imply that it does not necessarily have to be delegated to the selectmen?
Um, no, it doesn't have to be. I mean, you could delegate it to some other, uh, town staff or official, but I don't know what other options you have.
But you, could you delegate, could you, does, could you delegate it to the planning board?
I, I like it as the board of selectmen or some other town staff as opposed to the planning board.
Okay, gotcha.
I think if you're delegating it to the planning board, it, it gets a little closer than I'm comfortable with to an innovative land use control type situation, um, which is a, a more specific statutory grant of authority.
Could you explain a little bit about that innovative land use?
Um, um, the, the land use, and I don't have, I, my land use book, so I'm sorry, I can't, I can't quote it to you, but it's, it's RSA six seventy-four twenty-one, which is the land use, the zoning, um, enabling statute. And it basically says that your zoning ordinance can identify, um, certain use categories that require what's called a special use permit or a conditional use permit. And the administration of those, those special use or conditional use permits can be delegated to the planning board, the board of selectmen, um, or some other town staff or official. And so it's, it's, I think the idea was to identify certain uses that the planning board should really have a very primary role in determining if it's a, a good use or not for the, the property in question, um, and, and letting that decision be made by the planning board as opposed to the zoning board or code enforcement or, or somebody else. No, thank you.
Who determines what this list of special uses is? Is it listed in that?
It's in your zoning ordinance. So it would be, if you did something like this, you'd have to amend your zoning ordinance, and you'd have to identify the zoning district that this would happen in, or create a new overlay zoning district. And yeah, you'd have to list, you know, if you're gonna, if you wanna do this use in this district, you need to go to the planning board for a conditional use permit or a special use permit.
So it's similar to a special exception or something?
Yeah, but it goes to the planning board as opposed to the EBA. And again, the thought being that, um, you know, the planning board is in a better situation to look at how the use is compatible or not on that specific property, uh, to be able to say yes or no to granting a special use permit or conditional use permit. But I, I go through all that because, uh, to Bill's question about having the planning board handle sign permits feels a little. feels a little too close to that, um, special use, conditional use permit, um, process without having gone through the, the formal process of enacting it in your zoning ordinance. Okay, um, so if there's no other questions on that, the next thing she brought up, I think we've already chatted about, because she raised some questions about content-based differences in the sign ordinance. Uh, and I think Bill did a good job of kind of articulating those. So unless you guys wanna chat about that again or have new questions, then I'm gonna go on to the next one.
But you think a rework is required?
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, let's see. So now we're going, and this is within the sign ordinance, this next one, um, and it is K. Eighteen F and twenty. Okay, this, this is another example of what Tara thought is more appropriate for private covenants. And she's probably right in, in that you do see these sorts of limitations more often in private covenants than in a zoning ordinance. So my response is that she, she emphasized eighteen F. And that says, and this is for off-premise directional sign, "The board of selectmen reserves the right to establish a common look for all off-premise signs and reject any application that does not conform to that standard." My problem with that is that's pretty vague. I, I don't know what a common look is. Uh, I think someone that got denied because their sign didn't satisfy that common look language would have a pretty good argument to say, you know, what, what the heck is that? You know, I could come in seven different meetings and maybe get several different answers. So I, I, I think if you're gonna have any sort of, uh, a restriction on signage that calls for, uh, the kind of character of the area to be maintained or to have a common look, that I would recommend you, you put some, some more detail into it.
Would that be true even if, now, all off-premise signs at this point are on public land? There are no such things as off-premise on private.
Okay.
So they're all on public. Would that change? Or do we then have the right as owners of the public property to decide to stand up to it?
I think you have the right as the owner of private property to say, if you wanna, if you want us to host a sign for you, then you've gotta meet these requirements.
But we have to spell them out.
I think you need to spell them out.
Okay, all right.
I think you need to do a, do a little, do a little dead work and, and try to hone in on, on a little more detail about what you're, what you're trying for.
Okay.
So six is okay, but needs to be more detailed?
Well, yeah, eighteen F needs more detail, uh, and similar comment to twenty A.
Character of the valley.
Yeah, and, and for twenty A, it's, it's the language in question is the character of the valley. You know, what does that mean?
Oh, I agree with you.
Um, so.
Could you refer to a report such as the pedestrian village report or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the, there are sufficient details to, to guide someone. You know, if they, if they could look at the report and, and be like, okay, now I understand what, what maybe could be approved and what has no chance of being approved.
If, if we went to the extent of actually designing, here, here's what it's gonna look like. This is it. So if you want a sign, you must, in fact, you know, you, you, you've gotta, you've gotta do exactly this. That would be allowed.
Yeah.
Because that, we've had that debate, whether we should on all these directional signs, whether the town ought to take over ownership of them. The reason we haven't set the stan, it's standard is because we don't wanna pay the cost of putting the damn signs up.
Sure.
But you do have the ability, apparently have the right to dictate exactly what it is.
Right, and if we did that, could we then reasonably chart? Could we say, you, you wanna, you wanna get, and most of these are signs where you're just putting a panel into an existing sign or hanging something. Could we make the, if the business pay for the cost of putting their thing up?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're using your property.
Right.
Um, and they don't have, um, I don't see them as having a, a right to do that without your permission.
Let me ask you another bugaboo, which we've gone through. We've got this, we've got signs right now that are off-premise that are not conforming because they were there ten years ago when the regulations were different. Can we kick them off, private property, uh, off our property, our public property?
They're on your property?
They're on our property. It's on the public right of way on the highway. Can we kick the sign off? Or can we give them notice that in X number of years, you're gonna have to remove this?
That's a trickier question.
Why is it a tricky question? I mean, is, is per, is permission once given forever?
Because you're talking about something that at one time complied with zoning.
Yeah, right.
And now it's non-conforming. And so the question is, does the body of law that grants, that gives you grandfathered rights, uh, apply to sign interest restrictions? Because I think the intent behind the whole grandfathering was that it really applies to use and, and maybe structures. And so that's why I say it's not, it's not entirely clear. Uh, I think the better argument is probably that those sorts of signs are grandfathered. Uh, and that unless, unless they're expanded or relocated or something like that, as long as they remain in their present location, you know, eh, you know, any subsequent zoning changes, they don't have to comply with.
If there was a structure on public property that was granted the right, it was private individual put the structure on public property and then i- in ten years' time, it didn't meet safety code requirements?
Well, that's, that's different. That's a good, good question. Public health and safety, like building code, um, something like that, typically, you don't recognize any grandfathering like that.
What about maintenance of the sign?
Yeah, maintenance of the sign.
Yeah, they've gotta maintain it.
Can it be, you know, kept up in its current location as long as they don't change where it is?
Was that part of the pre-existing zoning or?
Yes, it was part of the pre-exist, it's been there forever that you must maintain your sign.
Well, yeah, you can enforce that, because you're, you're enforcing the pre-existing zoning requirement.
No, 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 but they can maintain a non-conforming sign that was conforming at the time it was put up. They can go back and paint it and all of that.
Oh, yes, yes, they can change the color, you mean?
Right, change the color or do any of that.
Yes, they can do that without triggering current zoning.
Okay.
Requirements, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Change the color? That sounds like a change.
I don't think that would, I, I reserve the right to change my, my mind on this, but as I sit here right now, I don't think that just changing the color, um, you lose your, your grandfather rights. Because you're, uh, I don't know how, I mean, unless you had very specific color requirements in your ordinance at the time it was first put up, there, there's, there's really nothing different about the sign that you should lose your, your grandfather rights, because you're not moving it, you're not expanding it, you're not relocating it.
Sounds like the town never wants to do it. Why grant someone forever rights?
Yeah, so once, once a, a individual or entity is given authority to put a sign on public property, that's forever?
No.
Town can't come in five years from now and say, we don't want your sign there anymore, take it down?
No, I think you can do that. But I think you need to be clear about that at the time you, you give approval in the first place.
Yeah, that's the issue.
See, the issue is we granted them approval.
We granted them approval without saying you.
Right.
We reserve the right to have you take this down at any time.
So you granted approval, that's forever?
Well, the way we did it is maybe for a long time. But we can, well, I'm learning what needs to be in the sign permit application. There needs to be some kind of made-on time.
Well, I think you say, you know, this is a license. We're granting you a license to put up a sign at this location for whatever timeframe.
Right.
You know, subject to review, whatever time period. But it's, just to make it clear that it's not a, a permanent, a permanent right.
Are there any s-
I'm sorry.
Are there any signs, uh, on public locations that have any lighting to them? And would, that's strictly controlled by the town?
Currently, do we have any that are in, not to, not to my knowledge, that where they're on public property and they violate the lighting requirements?
Well, um, I don't know that they violate it, but the big town square sign is light.
No, I don't think it does violate it. That, that talks about indirect lighting is, is allowed.
Now, if we change the lighting requirement, can we go back and make them conform or?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. Because I just, I mean, I get what you're saying. I mean, there's an argument to be made that that's a public health type regulation, but, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I think that, yeah. Uh, so moving on to the next one is still in Article five, but paragraph L. And this is trince, trince trailers, trailers, snowmobiles, boats, and commercial vehicles. And Tara, Tara identified paragraphs one and two. This is another one that, uh, you might typically see in a private covenant. Um, I think these are fine to be in a zoning ordinance. Uh, I think that you can, again, you can zone for aesthetics. There's no questions or comments on that one?
No.
Okay. Uh, so the next one is paragraph N, architectural regulations. Another one that you, you typically see in a private covenant. This is another place where I think you need to add some detail. Yeah, in, in sub-paragraph three. First of all, there's no sub-paragraph one. I don't know if that's intentional or not, but, um, yeah, sub-paragraph three says, "Comparable with existing post nineteen sixty-six construction in Waterville Valley." You might be able to squeak by, uh, if that was challenged, but, uh, you know, if you're gonna be changing some of this stuff and thinking about it, I'd recommend you, you try to be a little more detailed with that language. Like what, what are you, what style, uh, maybe is a good, a good prompt? Are you hoping that people, um, bring forward to you? And the other, other language is in the next paragraph, sub-paragraph four, the last sign, the last line. It ends with, uh, "The board of selectmen shall have the authority to approve modification of the roof pitch provided there are reasons for the change and that the general appearance is attractive." It's that last phrase, "General appearance is attractive." If there's a way to, um, add a little detail about what would make something attractive versus not attractive or consistent with the surrounding area, uh, or a certain type of building or facade, then I would recommend you guys, um, add that, that level of detail. So that's all I have for that, that particular one. I don't know if anybody wanted to chat about that one.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next one is P, and that is, what is it? Construction site cleanup. And Tara, so it's like paragraph four. Reads, "A suitable container for solid waste must be rented from the town and be on-site at the start of construction. All employee food waste must be deposited in this container." Uh, I do agree with her that I don't think you can require someone to rent from the town. But I wanted to get some feedback from you guys as to why that was in there in the first place.
I don't even think we required that, do we? Do we enforce this at all?
Yeah.
No.
Then.
So we just should take it out.
Just take it out.
Right.
What, what it, what it probably was put in there for was because of the animals. And I would say that something that requires whatever container is there to be animal-proof.
That'd be fine, or with a lid.
Is prob, you know, include a lid or whatever.
Secure lid, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think that's probably where that came from.
Yeah, if you, yeah, so.
Will we allow private dumpsters on construction sites?
If you wanna, if you wanna require that sort of type of trash containment, I think that is permissible, but I don't think you can require someone to rent from the town.
And we could leave in that second sentence, right, "All employee food waste must be deposited if we have the secured container." Just, again, it's a health issue.
I don't know. I don't know.
We'll come up with something.
Yeah.
It's funny, none of these have paragraph one, but I, item one, I'll start with two.
Oh, really? Oh, you're right, it's fine. Yeah, you're right. Okay, um, so the next one is, she has section, uh, five, but I think she meant section six. And it's six A two, which is non-conforming uses in buildings. Uh, and this one actually gets back to the discussion we were just having about sign alteration. Right, and I agree with Tara here. She says, um, she had an issue with altered in any way whatsoever, including renovation, because that's extremely broad and would probably, um, include changing the sign color to go with some of the examples that we just discussed. Uh, and I, I think, I, like her, I share her concern about that language being too broad. Uh, and what she suggested here is that should probably be, uh, limited to moving or enlarging or, or something to that effect, and I agree with that, that, um, sign alteration, the way it's currently written, is, is too broad. And that's, that's the list.
Okay. Is there one else that you, you, you've had concerns from things that you've talked about before? In any situation?
I, I have not had a chance to go through the ordinance other than what Tara flagged for me.
Okay.
Uh, I, I do plan to do that, um, just, just because if you're gonna go through the exercise of doing amendments, then now's a good time to take a more comprehensive spin through the ordinance. Uh, so there could be other things. Uh, I think Tara even mentioned that she may have some others that she might wanna, uh, bring to your attention. But I think that she and I wanted to chat first before we got to that step, so.
So after your chatting and, and both of you going through the whole thing, we'll get some sort of a written, uh, recommendation or something as we went through?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, Mark, Mark's given me a, a word version of the ordinance. So what I would probably do, and, um, I'm guessing Tara would probably do something similar, we'd work on one document instead of two server ones, is we, we redline, um, the changes that we propose, uh, in the document so that you guys could see what, what kind of new language we're recommending and what needs to be deleted, that sort of thing. Um, and probably the email that, uh, sends that to you would probably call your attention to a couple of key areas, um, to, to, um, consider when you look at the, the kind of minutia of the changes.
Okay. And Mark, um, this all has to do with the zoning ordinance itself. And then we have regulations with regard to subdivision and, uh, site plan approval. And those regulations, uh, still, those, if you're gonna re, revise regulations, that still requires town, well, is that correct? Regulations.
So your, your subdivision or site plan regs, this body can do on its own. I mean, you have to give notice and have a hearing, but you don't have to go to town meeting, I guess is the important distinction.
So, site plan and subdivision regs.
Okay, so once, all right, we can change them just with public hearing and vote by the pub, by the planning board? Bill?
Yeah, and one thing I would ask you when you finally do take your look.
Yeah.
That I, I've noticed in the past, uh, our planning board is, is, are not a bunch, we're not professionals. We don't have a professional planner. We have gotten confused by our own regulations, particularly in some of the basic concepts of what's a use by right, accessory use by right, special exceptions, particularly special exceptions. We have a tendency not to write them or to write the boundaries, and I'd be interested in your take on what we've, what's in here.
Okay.
Because to me, eh, 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 I, I think we've just made some decis- Because to me, I, I, I think we've just made some decisions based on misinterpretations of that whole. And that's the, the core of what this is all about.
It would be helpful if you could give me some sort of an example.
Well, we, we've had people argue that the, that an access, that the, it's listed under an accessory use by right. Therefore, I, you know, that's what I wanna use it for, that, that's grounds for, you know, allowable use. And I'm saying, uh-uh, no, no. And we're not real clear, it's some.
That's because.
And likewise, our special exceptions, there are some cases where we lay out the conditions upon which the ZBA should consider it. There are other cases we don't. And I don't even know what that, you know, is, is that, what does that mean? And, you know, if we, if we don't say anything, what is the ZBA to do?
Um, if you don't say anything, um, I think in state statute, the ZBA still has to find, give me a second here. Okay, yeah. All special exceptions shall be made in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and in accordance with the general or specific rules contained in the ordinance. Um, so there is.
Okay.
Very squishy language in the state statute about what the ZBA needs to find to grant special exception. Um, I think that if you are concerned about how squishy that language is, and I think you would be uh, within your right to think that because it's really squishy, then you should consider an amendment to have specific criteria for the ZBA to, to find.
And would, so if we go to page twelve of the ordinance, it's low-density residential. Um, so it's section A, sub-paragraph four. Um, it says special exception, public utilities, public service installations, public buildings and grounds, and raising and keeping of animals. So you're saying that, that would be the place where you would put?
No, you, you probably have a, um, yeah, article, article eight, which talks about the board of adjustment.
Okay.
Um, you would probably put in there, um, cause you, in that article, you probably have some language about special exceptions. Hold on a second. You may, maybe you don't.
We, on some of these we do and some of them we don't. And that's a little, like, for instance, we have a lot of language around what the ZBA is supposed to look at regarding the raising and keeping of animals.
Right.
But in others, we have no language.
Well, we do. We have D two.
Yeah.
We, we have.
Well, anyway, yeah, I never wanna make up.
We have six uh, things that they're supposed to look at.
As long as we're, we're okay, that, that was my only thing is.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have some criteria here in article eight for special exception beyond what I just read in the statute.
Alright.
It says, uh, the, the use will not adversely affect the adjacent area or result in a diminution of property value. Um, complies with all other regs established by the ordinance for the district involved in the proposed use and will not be a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Okay, it's only.
So, there's a little guidance.
Alright.
But if you wanted to add um, additional guidance that would apply for any special exception that came before the ZBA, you would put it in this article eight. And then if there were particular uses, like agricultural uses, that, you know, maybe you wanna get a little further in the weeds and um, have some more specific language to those sorts of uses, then I would say you put that um, in whatever zoning district, you know, those sorts of things are allowed by special exception, you know? Just add language that says, you know, if you wanna, if you want a special exception for an agricultural use in this district, you know, in addition to the criteria elsewhere in the ordinance, the ZBA needs to find A and C. Just list them out.
Okay.
Uh, and on your accessory use question, that is a very good question. Um, I can give you guys, and I'm sure Tara could too, some guidance in wrestling with that. Um, but with a lot of this stuff, it's not gonna be bright line, black or white type guidance. It's, it's, you're gonna have to make a judgment call. Um, but yeah, I can, I can give you a little, um, something to help you with that stuff.
Okay. Cause I think where we've gotten, and, and I, and I'm not sure I have the right interpretation, but we've gotten into discussions regarding where it, what somebody's proposing is not listed in one of the uses by right.
Right.
But it is an accessory use and if that is the only use of the property.
Is it really an accessory use?
Yeah.
Right.
And, and that's where we've gotten into some lengthy discussions.
Yes. And does your ordinance, I'm looking right now as I'm asking, does it define accessory and primary use?
I, I'm not sure it does.
Maybe not well.
Yeah, I think there's a difference.
I think there's a definition. Accessory building, but not in.
Yeah, and maybe we just need it in definitions or something.
Use, yes, if you go to uh, definition ninety-six on page eleven.
Eleven, okay.
They're both defined. I don't know if they're defined well enough.
Oh, here we go, okay. Yep, that, that language that you have here is uh, pretty much the standard definitional language you'll see in um, a lot of other municipalities. Uh, and yeah, this is, this is one of those, one of those areas where you, you gotta look at the facts as they are, if you find them, and make a judgment on, on whether or not the use is incidental and accessory to the principal use of the property. And if there is no principal use, then I think that's a good, a good basis to say, you're not asking for an accessory use, you're asking for a principal use, and that's not permitted here, so.
Okay.
And it has to be, the use has to be there to be a use on, in that zone. Is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, you could come in and say, I wanna start a new use.
Really?
Is that?
Well, no, 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 no. If, if we have listed out the uses by right.
Okay.
Those are the only uses.
Oh, correct.
In that zone.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That are allowed.
Correct. And you probably have language, um, I hope you do.
It says non-conforming.
It says if it's not a list specified as permitted by right, then it's prohibited.
Yes, I think we do.
I think you do. Most, most all ordinances do. Um, but I can.
Yes, it says a person shall not use any lot in a lower density except as here and after specifically.
Yep, there you go, yep.
Alright. I have a question on a different subject.
Okay.
Is it incumbent on the planning board to assure that the deeds are recorded for the properties in giving a subdivision approval?
Um, and I, I've gone back and forth with Mark on this a little bit. I, I think if you wanna do that, it should be a condition of approval. A specific condition of approval. And if it's not a specific condition of approval, then I, I don't think it's, it's a planning board concern.
So the planning board can give an approval of a subdivision without assuring that there are deeds recorded? That, that convey the same subdivision?
Um, yeah, yeah, because sometimes developers get subdivision approval and then the market tanks and there's no, there's no deeds to come out. And, and, you know, you don't wanna tell them that they can't sell their subdivision approval to someone else who can do it because they haven't complied with deeding out the individual parcels, cause there's nothing to deed out at the time.
So if the situation arose where there was an approval for a subdivision or a lot line adjustment and one of the individuals that was involved, um, came back to the planning board and said, the other, the other individual with regard to the lot line adjustment or the subdivision went ahead and did the work and we never really, we never finished the deal with the deeds here.
Yeah.
The, the planning board can say, well, that's really.
That's a private matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that unfortunately, I, I sympathize with the, the plight of the individual property owners there, but it's a private matter. Uh, and, and unless there was a specific condition of approval that um, deeds need to be exchanged in conformance with whatever you guys approved, then no, I, I think that's something that the, the individual property owners are left to their own devices to figure out.
Thanks. Bill?
On, on that same subject though, if it's a lot line adjustment, so the main property owner meets zoning requirements and the, and the deeds are never transferred, and the town allows someone to build, assuming that those transfers took place, you now have a property that does not meet zoning requirements. And I think, when understanding is, it's the selectman's responsibility to enforce zoning. So in, I agree that whatever deals there were with these property owners to transfer land is a civil matter, but now you have a zoning violation. What do you do about the zoning violation?
Um, that's a good question. Um, you know, I, I think one way you could handle it is uh, tell both property owners they're in violation and, and hopefully hold their feet to the fire that way to get the transactional stuff taken care of.
The, the town issued both a building permit and an occupancy permit for a property that doesn't meet zoning. Do you threaten to withdraw the occupancy permit?
Um, you know, I, I don't know because I, I, I feel like we're getting into hypotheticals and, and and I don't wanna give an answer because you're not, you don't work for the town.
I agree.
So I'm, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm trying to think of another case here where. In the case of a phased subdivision.
No, I think we need to, yeah, we need to get the answer.
Do you say I can't ask the question?
No, I think we need to get the answer, I agree.
In the case of phased subdivision, uh, you have a large lot that is subdivided into two lots. With the intention of developing lot B in four phases. The, um, if the subdivision, can you approve the subdivision of lot B? Without having a deed then? And without a deed, you, you could still approve that subdivision of the lot, is that correct?
Yeah.
And in approving that lot, you can parcel it out in four segments. Phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. And only record the plot plan for, or the plat plan for phase one with the um, county. And still have approval of, you, you can still say that that whole subdivision is approved, subdivision or subdivision of A and B is approved, even though only a portion of B is recorded with a plat plan? Can, can it still be said that subdivision for B is approved?
For all of B or, or just the phase of B that?
For all of B. For all of B. And taking into consideration that there have been improvements done on all of B, even though only B point one has been uh, recorded.
And, and, this is, we're getting into the, um, is, are the improvements on B, are they part of the B one phase or are the larger subdivision approval, or are they other improvements?
They would be improvements that would apply to the entire four phases.
Okay, okay. And your question is?
Can that subdivision of B be considered approved? If only, with, with these um, improvements done? Uh, approved, with these improvements done, and only phase point one, B point one being recorded? And then you move on to the second phase? With the understanding that this has already been approved, and the only thing that needs to be done is to um, submit a plat.
Why is supposed to be done?
Well.
B point two.
Right, and.
B point three and B point four, is what you're asking.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have a hard and fast answer for you because it really depends on um, how much information was presented to you when you first approved the A and B subdivisions.
It was thorough.
If, if there's enough that you, you understand, everybody understands what is approved and, and uh, what is required to comply with the plat in your approval, then I think you're probably okay. I think a lot of, a lot, some other municipalities um, require the developer to come back for um, the subsequent phases. Um, and so, yeah, you do the A and B subdivision and that is uh, approved and recorded, and then they come back for phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four because circumstances change. And if it's a huge project, you may have a couple of years go by between um, when you start construction on phase one and, and, and get to the point where you wanna do the same on phase two or phase three.
So, it, it's the actual subdivision that gets phased. It's not the site, it's not like you prove one whole subdivision and then phase the site. It's actually phased, facing the subdivision.
Well, then, then, then my answer then is, yeah, as long as the developer has met the um, substantial completion and um, active, I forget the phraseology, but as long as they've complied with um, those requirements, which you should have in your subdivision regs, what defines active and substantial and then.
Well, I think that's what we have to look at. The zoning ordinance is time sensitive, so I think, but I think that's part of the site plan review, um, site plan regulation review that we need to do.
Right.
And the sub div regs that we need to do, um, after we take care of the zoning changes so we can get them to town meeting.
Yeah, the, the laws that, you know, if you have a subdivision plat that you approve, um, your, your, either your regs or your approval is, is supposed to specify what the developer has to do to meet what's called active and substantial development. And if they do those sorts of things, and that's usually infrastructure, roads, that sort of stuff, if they do that within um, twenty-four months, then their approval is vested for a period of five years. And then within that five-year period, they have additional things they have to do, and that's called active and substantial development. And that also should be defined in your regs or by your approval. And if they do, if they meet all of those things within um, the timeframe that you give them, then they're vested from having to come back before you forever.
What, now, once the planning board views the subdivision of A and B, understanding that it, that it's going to be done in four, that B is gonna be a four-phase subdivision. What's the tax situation for that, lot, lot B? In other words, does lot B get taxed as a separate lot? Or does only a quarter of it get taxed as a separate lot?
It's only get B one.
There's a statute which talks about that. It's six seventy-four thirty-seven dash A. And I, I'm, I'd have to read the statute and then give you an answer, cause I don't know the statute off the top of my head. But I know there's a statute that is supposed to address that question. Um, so just give me a second and let me see if I can, if I can answer you.
Cause to me, that, the whole concept of a phased subdivision is, is difficult, it's confusing. I can understand phased site development, but either it's subdivision or it's not a subdivision in, in my mind. And I don't understand how you can subdivide, say, you, you have a subdivision B, but yet it's not really subdivided that way yet. There's only a quarter of it that's subdivided.
The setback issue too.
Well, the setback, I mean, it, it goes to all sorts of different things, but just the idea of, do you have a lot A and a lot B? Or do you have a lot A and a quarter of lot B, even though you have an approved subdivision on, on record? Where, you know, where does it stand?
But the setbacks until it's all, until it's finished would be non-compliant.
Right.
So how, how do you, how do you approve something like that?
The, the statute says, if you have a subdivision approval that's been granted on or before April first of a particular tax year, then such lots for that tax year um, are treated separately. Whether or not any sale or transfer has actually occurred. So if you've-
But this isn't subdivided into separate lots at this point. The developer has said, I want to develop, I want to subdivide B out of A. But I want it to be a phased subdivision, so I'm only going to, I'm only going to develop Phase One, and I'm only going to record a plat plan for Phase One.
Then only, only Phase One is treated separately?
And it's taxed separately, just Phase One?
Just Phase One, because this says, without further approval or action by the municipality. And so, under the scenario you're describing, that's only that Phase One.
Okay.
And then the next paragraph says, if subdivision approval does not become final until after April first of a particular tax year, then all assessments, tax warrants, appraisals during that tax year pertaining to the entire non-subdivided property.
So is there a Lot B? When only Phase One of that subdivision is completed? Is there a Lot B? Is there a Lot A and a Lot B, or is there a Lot A and a Lot B Point One only?
I forget, I forget the specifics of the hypothetical we're talking about. There's certainly a Lot A, and I don't-
B is, B is the entire approved subdivision.
Okay.
B Point One is only Phase One of it. And Phase One is, has been developed and has been recorded.
And is Phase One a separate lot?
That's my question. Well, it's not really a separate lot. It hasn't been subdivided out of B, no.
Okay, then it's, it's-
I think you're confusing things a little bit. The, the Phase One lot is a separate lot, and it is recorded as a separate lot. It meets all zoning requirements as it stands alone as a separate lot. The future phases have never been finally, final platted.
Right. And in that situation, Phase One is a separate lot, and all the other ones are not.
But wouldn't Phase One, if you approved B, if you've approved Lot B?
You've never approved Lot B.
Well, this is what your claim is.
No.
It's exactly what your claim is. You have claimed subdivision approval of Lot B.
No, I've never said that, and even at the last two meetings, Terrell, I've made a specific point of saying, there was never a final approval for that, for the big parcel. It's a phased subdivision that I said, I, my claim is, meets the definition of a phased subdivision in the subdivision regulations.
And I don't want to say anything further about this, because clearly this is a concrete dispute between-
There's no dispute, it's a miss, it's just a value, it's a matter of how we understand what's going on. I don't think it's any real dispute. It's a matter of confused-
Regardless, I'm happy to have this conversation in private with you guys, but not with someone from the public here sitting here, because I don't want to have my words or my responses twisted against the town somehow. And that, I don't mean that disrespectfully, you know, but I just, I just, I don't want to, if you want to keep talking about it, then we can do it in private, but I don't want to say anything further.
I just want to understand it one way or the other.
I would like to understand it, because it's-
So if that means we go into non-public and do it, I'd like to-
Because I think Bill's made some good points. I mean, I think there's some good points made, but I just don't understa, I can't understand the situation.
We need to understand what you have done legally and what-
Right.
Because if we're not taxing it correctly, then we need to fix that, or whatever the situation is. But we need to understand what's going on, I agree.
And, and to be honest with you, you know, if you really want an answer, then I'm going to need to dive into the details. And the whole generalities thing, which is convenient, I think I'm going to have to see what you approved, see what was proposed. So I don't know if I can give you a-
We need to talk about just a little bit more to, so you know what they-
That's fine, but I'm just saying, I don't know if I can give you an opinion, you know, without looking at the actual documentation, so.
Okay, well, we have the documentation, so if you can stay, can we do it today? Can you stay today?
Yeah, I can probably stay for under twenty minutes or so, and then I probably need to get back to the office.
Unless we go out of session for a temporary time.
I'm going to have to leave, but before you do that, can I make one other suggestion?
Sure.
If you're going to do this legal and planning review of the zoning ordinance, I would suggest you consider doing it to the subdivision and the site plan review or-
Oh, yes.
Regulations also, because I'm pretty confident that there's stuff in the subdivision regulations that's inconsistent with the zoning regulations, particularly as it relates to parking, for example.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we take, well, this particular, the phased development, I mean, is one that I would like to look at with regard to regulations in the parking shop.
And I think it may behoove us to have workshop meetings that are, you know, you're not making any decisions, but we're talking through this stuff. Because it makes these meetings go extremely long.
Well, can we go out of session now to discuss this? And, you know, it's right on the tip of our tongues here, and I'd like to be able to continue the discussion if I can. So, Bill, if you would excuse us, thank you for your additions.
A lot of trouble here.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess I thought the idea was that he could take his previous packet and submit it as an application.
Yeah, but he hasn't done that, was a great saying.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, when he does that, then definitely, but until he does that, I don't see, that's like us putting in an application for him.
Right.
What if you gave him a letter that just said that you will use that information so that he knows, he doesn't have to go out and get all of the engineering again, but he's got something he can fall back on, that the board will use that info?
Yes, to me, that seems obvious, I mean, he's got the information, he can use it. But I don't think we should be discussing it until we get an application.
And he should be here, right?
Well, he had agreed to be here, and he was here, but then it just went so long. But there really should be copies that everybody can look at. And there are certain things in it that I agree, that I know I'm going to already ask for, and that's, you know, make it in function what you're asking for, as opposed to, you know, just the little lot, you mean, the whole lot. It meets and bounds and all.
So we're going to send him a letter, and who does that?
Oh, it'll be me if we're going to do that, if everybody's in-
Well, that way he knows what-
Yeah? Well, if it's the board, if it's the general consensus of the board, then I can write a letter that states that we would like, or we would require a new application, and would be willing, are we willing to start with the package that's already been submitted with an application on top of it? Is that what we're looking to do, or are we going to, say, get some new engineering already?
Shouldn't that be his decision?
I don't know what he's, I don't, I don't think he is, well, he can speak for himself, I, but-
Yeah, I mean, we-
I think this whole issue is precipitated because he's trying to find some leverage to be able to elect a sign, because we told him to cease and desist of marking those lots out there. I don't, I, I think if he's actually required to start submitting things, he's not prepared to do that yet.
It's up to him.
It's up to him. But my feeling is, this is all, he's trying to find a way that we would give him permission to allow a sign to go up.
But he needs to be clear on what we're clear on. He doesn't seem to be clear on what we're clear on.
Well, we'll make a statement in the letter that says it's the, it's the planning board's-
In writing, he needs to be clear.
Conclusion, right. It's the planning board's conclusion that we have approved Phase, Phase One.
Right, and that's it.
I wouldn't use the word phase.
Okay, that we, that we have approved-
B.
The current-
Certain-
On B.
B.
We'll have to find a way to describe it.
Well, it's got a number.
Yeah, it has a size. Yeah, it doesn't, has a tax book.
Right.
That we've approved that subdivision, and that, you know, we're, if further consideration of anything called a phased subdivision, we'd have to come with a new application. I'll figure out the wording or something, but basically, that I, our conclusion is that it was not approved as a phased subdivision, so.
I would stay away from the word phased from the planning board, just say future development.
Really?
I don't think we should be talking about a phased, because that's him. He's, he's got a phase in his mind, but we don't have any phases.
That's true.
Future development.
And I don't think we should necessarily-
Agree?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, he's hanging his hat on one little paragraph that's in the subdivision. There's no definition in the subdivision regulations of anything dealing with phased subdivisions, right? Other than that one paragraph, and, and it's-
And it's his decision whether he wants to use what he's previously submitted or not.
Absolutely.
So we shouldn't say ahead of time, we'll accept.
Yeah, I don't think we should get into that.
He could ask the question, I suppose.
Sure.
And we'd say, send, submit a new application with all the required documentation. He already has a lot of it.
I think we gave him the hint last meeting, if we not, because I think that was discussed.
We said it, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so if we say, planning board conclusion is that green pick subdivision approval has been for a tax map lot such and such, and tax map lot such and such, for two lots. Further subdivision approval will require formal application.
Yeah.
Again, did you want to use subdivision or future development? Yeah, because you have both subdivision and site plan approval.
Good point. Further development approval? A further development will require subdivision-
Appropriate subdivision and site plan.
It's direct, it's short.
So when I come back for Christmas, I won't see a sign there.
Okay, Mary and I'll get that. Okay. Kind of running line, or something, going to put off the definition of condo hotel. I don't know, we're still on that anyway, really. And once, once more, request for a conservation commission planning board ex officio. Was there any further on that, Mark? You were supposed, you were going to meet with Dave Olah.
I have talked to David, and he said, when he thinks that there's something for them to cover, he'll call me.
But that's, that's not right.
I'm just telling you what he said.
It's been non-existent for over a year now, right? So-
Is there a, like, a job description, you know, a job, but, you know, for the different-
I'm sorry, Mark, again, is it, was there a requirement for a once-a-month meeting or anything like that? There's nothing like that, okay.
There's no time limits or requirements for meetings. It just lays out the duties and responsibilities of the conservation commission and other land use boards are what, what's in the statute. But I talked to that, talked to David about having regular meetings quarterly, even semi-annually. And he kind of said, yeah, maybe, but if there's a requirement for a meeting, I'll have a meeting.
The only thing I question on that, Mark, is, and, and this is what I've been going through, but the wetlands language for the master plan has never been completed. That was supposed to be done based on this study. So, does that not require meetings?
Well, the master plan is the purview of the planning board, so if you want to draft another letter to David,
Can we force a meeting?
and maybe that will spur him to have a conservation commission meeting, but ask him where the language, recommended language is for wetlands in the master plan. That, that would be appropriate, because you're in charge of the master plan.
So the conservation commission comes under the planning board?
No, there, you had asked them for recommended language on the wetlands, based on the big wetland study that they did. You asked them for language to be inserted into the master plan.
Right.
They have not provided that to you yet, so-
Oh, you're giving them a reason for a meeting, is what you're saying.
Right, exactly.
But what's the end game of that? That he's not going to get a quorum? Then what?
I know he's reached out for, to get everybody together for a meeting, and nobody can meet that one date that he reached out for. So, we asked him, Ira asked him to give us a couple of other dates that everyone can try and agree on. And I know Paul Sullivan is not here during the week at all. I'm pretty sure that's what he said, so.
Why is he on the commission?
That's another person that's, it sounds like the only one that's going to be available is Ira, I don't know, I just-
Well, we're, other than disbanding the conservation commission, we're kind of stuck until March with the reappointment of people.
Right.
Then it falls on, under the selectmen to work on.
Okay, okay, good.
All right, so is the planning board going to issue that letter? Are we in agreement that that letter will be issued?
I agree.
I don't see any, hold on a minute.
Well, even more provides the selectmen with a reason to relook at this.
Should we copy the selectmen?
Yeah, absolutely.
For non-performance.
Language on wetlands for master plan. Okay. Committee reports, Town Corps?
Yeah. We have, with the assistance of Mark Kane from the SCU group, submitted our TAP application. I believe that went in last Friday. And that's primarily focusing on helping to direct bicycle, as well as pedestrian traffic, from the town core, town square more specifically, to the various spokes of the wheel, as Mark Kane always liked to say. So, to Snow's Mountain Left, to the rec department, using more of the trail system, building out the existing trail system, adding on to it, to include adding a trail around Corfren's Pond. So that was the focus, which I believe we've spoken about here, but anyway, that was the focus for the, for this TAP application. Do we know when we're going to hear back, Mark?
The decision is before the end of December.
Okay.
It'll be issued.
So, and TAP is an eighty-twenty matching grant, so the project cost, the budget is eight hundred and fifty thousand. So, the awarded funds we're asking for is six hundred and eighty thousand.
Where did we come up with the number?
Based on the SCU group's study, the rough budget estimates, and running it by, you know, Mark Kane re-reviewed it to make sure it seemed appropriate. It's also lighting in that trail system, and it might be, it, the number was arrived at with the understanding that, given complications that we know always arise with these types of things, we may have to do, you know, instead of, the ideal number of light posts perhaps around the conduits, with the idea that the light posts would be added later, or, you know, with some give and take, sort of within it. And that's been really our main focus.
And when do you expect to hear again? And, and when do you expect to hear again?
Uh, by the end of December.
Okay, so you'll know, you've just gotta be careful about.
Well, actually, no, before town meeting this time, yeah.
Yeah, town meeting, whether we have enough detail.
Yes.
Okay, I, yeah, all right, to be able to put together a, you know, even a budget, you know, even assuming it's approved, you know, then you gotta get enough, you know, do we have enough detail? Cause no one would actually.
We will, if we are approved, the engineering will be done in time for town meeting to lay out a detailed budget. The numbers that we've put in, there were, there was some um, conceptual engineering that was done as part of the pedestrian study, that came up with uh, those big num- remember, he gave us a range of numbers, a low and a high?
Sure.
Yeah.
And so we, we basically took those numbers, refined them a little bit for the TAP grant, and looked at the number of linear feet of what we're doing under the TAP grant. And that's where we came up with the six eighty, the eight fifty, so.
Yeah, and. You've got easements?
Yes.
Where you need them?
We have all the.
Easements, so there is no land issue?
No, there is no land issue.
Okay.
If the grant is for uh, six hundred thousand, and the town's gonna put up two, these are just reference.
Yeah, yeah.
But the project ends up costing five hundred thousand dollars, how does, what happens? How does that work?
We do more?
It's eighty-twenty, no, that's right, we would add, because we have an existing, the pedestrian study allows us, if we, if we got the bids back and they were half of what we thought they were, we'll extend the amount of work that we'll be able to do.
To use it up.
To use it up. Um, it's, it's always eighty-twenty. Um, so, if it costs five hundred thousand dollars, then four hundred thousand of it would be um, state money, and a hundred thousand would be town money. But we could go back to D O T and say, hey, the bids came in great, here's our plan, now we wanna, we wanna do this portion.
Because it's not like we're pulling it out of the air, we have that homework done.
Right, we're not making it up, we use that. They're letting us use whatever is in the pedestrian study.
Aren't they generous?
Well, yeah, I think, I think an eighty-twenty program is proven.
Yeah, but eighty percent came out of this pocket.
The eighty already came out of this pocket, so you might as well.
May as well try to get it, yeah.
Just.
No, you can't.
I don't think so.
Well, the, the only commitment that we have right now, and, and if we don't get the grant, then we don't have to put the warrant article on. But the only commitment that we have right now is to put the hundred and seventy on the warrant.
Well, you'd, you'd have to put the eight hundred on the warrant.
Well, you have to put the whole amount on, but the hundred and seventy would be town money, so, yeah.
But explain that. Right.
But yes, this time we will know beforehand, so I think it's gonna be a much more concrete discussion to be had.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Um, any communications, Mary, that we should?
They're all included in your packet, there were uh, go through this plethora. There's a um, planning board meeting in Plymouth about the new cell tower. If anybody was.
Oh, yeah.
Where is it exactly, do you know?
When?
Know where, where they're talking about.
They always have it at the Plymouth Town Hall.
No, no, I mean, when the tower, yeah, I, I don't know where that.
They're putting.
I know it's on Tenney Mountain Highway.
Yeah, five eighty-three Tenney Mountain Highway, a good foot.
Wherever that is.
I'm not sure.
Doesn't matter.
In relation to everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be a tall one if they included. And there's some various other items.
Yeah, the permit for the.
Correct, for Green Peak. And you could look up where five eighty-three Tenney Mountain Highway is on um, their website, cause they, they have all their assessing online.
Thank you.
And tax maps.
Okay.
I already got over there.
I don't think we'll take up any of the tickle file items. Well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did you wanna do the C I P sub?
Oh, that's right, I forgot that. Yeah, that's right. Um, we've got to put together, or we'd like to put together a C I P committee. I'll be on it.
It's like, it's gonna do the budget.
You're the only one on it right now.
And I'd like to have you, I bet you could be gone. Anybody else interested in uh, being on the C I P committee?
What kind of time and?
So, we, we have, it's varies, but I think what, once a month we met, it takes probably three or four hours for the meeting. But I mean, it could be into more meetings depending on the timeframe and, and what kind of changes we're looking at. We usually have them, didn't we, well, we set them up Wednesday before the planning board meeting, right? Typically.
And it would be more in the morning?
Yeah, we'd, we'd do it early in the morning, eight o'clock. Thank you, Mary.
I have a question for Bill. If I, in resigning from the board, do I need to send you the selectmen a letter of mark, of resignation?
I don't know.
No, we just, so we can have it on file, and then we'll take you off, and they'll do, they'll do an appointment.
All right, and I should've announced this before, yes, this is Bob's last planning board meeting. Thank you very much for your service, Bob, appreciate all the, the help you've done. I have to do it. Wish you good luck in your new venture down there in the villages where all that stuff takes place. All right, let's not get into definitions.
Right. What is their zoning looking like?
Okay, that having been done, anything else, Mary, that you got on there for me?
No.
Okay. Entertain a motion, a motion to adjourn. I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's adjourned.